All right, welcome to the first of two required public hearings on a proposed charter change. Pursuant to Section 2.2 of the City of Rutland Charter and 17 DSA, Section 2645A1, the mayor has received a petition from not less than 5% of the legal voters of the City of Rutland to include the following question on ballot for town meeting day on March 5th. Shall the voters amend the City of Rutland Charter, Subchapter 24, Department of Public Works, Section 9-24.4, Commissioner, control of water supply as follows, to add the language -- this language: "Notwithstanding any other provision in this charter, no fluoride or any chemical containing fluoride shall be added to the City of Rutland water supply." So those in attendance who wish to speak to the proposed charter change, I can hear you raise your hands so we have an understanding of how many folks want to speak. All right, seven, so not bad, so folks can take their time, if you want five minutes or a little more to speak, that's fine. So what we'll do is we'll run the hearing like this. I'm going to have all the representatives of the groups proposing the amendment to speak first. Hey, Mr. Crowther, that'll be you, right?
Favor of the annual.
Proposing, is what I said.
Oh, I thought you said proposal, okay.
Propose. I'll try to enunciate. If there are any other groups who have a representative who wishes to speak for his proposal, we'll follow with them, and then each person after that who wishes to speak. Remember, only the person with the floor can speak. When I call on you, step to the podium, say your name and city of town of residence for the record, and we'll keep it orderly. So, Mr. Crowther, you want to go first?
My name is Jack Crowther, longtime resident of the City of Rutland. What's wrong with fluoridation? Many of you heard me talk about these points before, but I'll go over them rather quickly. Fluoridation is a violation of medical ethics. We're putting a drug, a medicine, in our water to treat tooth decay without the informed consent of the people that are receiving the medicine. That, to me, is a violation of medical ethics, and I would ask the public health community and the dental community, how is that not a violation of informed consent? Peer-reviewed science shows fluoride is a risk to infant brain development. Studies since 2017, high-quality studies, a number of them funded by the United States government, have shown a connection between increased fluoride levels in mothers and reduced IQ in the children. Fluoride is known to be an endocrine disruptor, disruptor of the hormonal system. This is well-established in science by, for example, the National Academies of Science. Fluoride upsets kidney function and glucose metabolism. Probably the most recognized ill effect of fluoride is causing dental fluorosis. This is a chart. Dental fluorosis is basically white spots staining, sometimes brown staining in severe cases, of the teeth. I think if any of you look at people's teeth, you will see occasionally instances of dental fluorosis, which is clearly linked to overconsumption of fluoride, overexposure to fluoride when the tooth enamel is being formed. The effectiveness of tooth decay remains inconclusive after 70 years, now almost 80 One of the most impressive demonstrations of this, and there are a number of studies that come to the same conclusion, that fluoride in the water is either of uncertain benefit or of no benefit. This is a graph of statistics compiled by the World Health Organization showing declines in tooth decay since 1970 in fluoridated countries, shown in red, and non-fluoridated countries, shown in blue, and what's evident is that decline has been very similar whether the country was fluoridated or not. Western Europe is about 97% unfluoridated, which belies the claim of the pro-fluoridationists that, and this is a citation of the Centers for Disease Control, which says that fluoridation was one of the top 10 achievements of the 20th century. If that was the case, why has not the rest of the world joined in and adopted fluoridation? Even our own CDC, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, says that the best use of fluoride is as a topical application to the surface of the teeth. Why then, when we have toothpaste, fluoride rinses, why then do we need to ingest it? Particularly when the benefits of fluoride in the water remains unproven. You know, the Public Health Service endorsed this practice in 1950, and all this time later, they're still pushing it hard. The proponents of fluoridation often say that, well, we need fluoridation for poor people because they don't get proper dental care. So this is a way of giving them some protection. Well, what I've said about the effectiveness or lack of effectiveness of fluoridation gives a lie to that statement. Low-income people are less able to buy fluoridated water. Low-income populations are also, in many cases, suffer greater instances of kidney disease and diabetes. Both of these conditions are exacerbated by ingestion of fluoride. The dentists and public health people often start out their presentations with the statement, well, fluoride is a natural mineral, and nearly all water supplies have fluoride in it. Well, that's a true statement. Fluoride is widespread in nature and fairly common in different concentrations in water supplies. What do we put in our, in Rutland's water? We don't put natural fluoride in the water. We put a chemical called fluorosilic acid, a highly corrosive chemical that must be shipped in lined tanks. The commissioner can probably verify the safety measures that are necessary in handling fluorosilic acid. It's a byproduct of the phosphate fertilizer industry. You treat phosphate rock with sulfuric acid. You get phosphate fertilizer, and as a byproduct, which goes up the chimney but is scrubbed with scrubbers, that scrubbed material is fluorosilic acid, contains various impurities, arsenic usually. When I look at the sheets that come with the Rutland delivery of fluorosilic acid, arsenic is in there. So it's not pharmaceutical grade at all. It's sometimes implied that, well, we have NSF International, which analyzes the shipments of this chemical, and that's some kind of guarantee of safety. Well, NSF does not guarantee the safety of fluorosilic acid. It tells you, it analyzes the content of batches of fluorosilic acid, and there's so much of fluorosilic acid, so much arsenic, so much of these other chemicals, but no guarantee of safety. Nobody guarantees the safety of this process, which has raised a question in my mind, what about the liability to Rutland if someone is able to show that they've been injured, that they're sensitive to fluoride in the water? And there are people who are particularly sensitive, Peg Florrie testified here a couple of times about her son and grandson being, that she cannot give them a glass of tap water when they visit her because they're particularly sensitive, they've got Crohn's disease, and their doctor has said, avoid fluoridation. Why are we putting a chemical in the water if, you know, any small group of people are going to be sickened by it? Nearly all of the fluoride Rutland adds to its water ends up in Otter Creek, where I maintain it is an environmental pollutant. The fluorosilic acid that we're buying for the city is a hazardous waste product. It cannot be dumped by the fertilizer companies into a lake or river or the ocean. It's a hazardous waste. So we bring it up to Rutland, we drink it, we flush it down the toilet, down the shower, goes into Otter Creek, and, you know, it's a pollutant to the environment. How is that, how does that make any sense? It's often said that, well, that fluoride is very diluted in the water supply, you would have to drink, you know, a swimming pool of fluoride, you know, to be killed by it. It's really not the issue. It's long-term exposure fluoride collects in the skeletal system, in the pineal gland. You know, most of it is extruded by the kidney, but if you have a kidney problem, then you're absorbing more, more of the fluoride, you're keeping more of it in your body and where it can do harm in various ways. I'll close and let other people talk, but one final thing I wanted to mention was, you know, this is, fluoride is in the water systems of most people in this country because it's been widely sold and widely accepted over many years. In 2016, opponents of fluoridation, nonprofit groups and a number of citizens filed a petition with the Environmental Protection Agency to end fluoridation due to the risks these chemicals pose to the brain. The research was so strong in that particular area that they made this the focus of the lawsuit, although they, you know, they could have, they could have listed other harms for which there's evidence, but they decided to focus on this, the risk to the developing brain of the fetus and infants who may be being fed formula which is made with fluoridated This petition was filed under the Toxic Substances Control Act, and here's the timeline of the lawsuit and its progress. It just so happens, I mean, this started in November 2016. The initial trial was in June of 2020, a seven-day trial, various delays since then. One of the delays was due to a pending report from the National Toxicology Program, which had a study that was due to come out. Well, we come down to January 31st, 2024. This is the second phase of the trial that's gone through all these, all these steps and delays, and those of us opposed to fluoridation are hoping that this will lead to a decision by the judge in our favor and that fluoridation will be basically disallowed by order of a judge to the Environmental Protection Agency. If any of you are interested in following it, it's going to be streamed on Zoom, starting 11:30 on Wednesday. You can go to the fluoridealert.org website and find the details for how you can watch it. There's, it's, I believe, a 10-day trial, so, yeah, it might be time-consuming, but we're hoping that this will bring an end to it. But in the meantime, you know, sometimes the EPA is, takes its time in writing up orders to implement a judicial finding. Rutland's been fluoridated for 40 years, way too long. People have been harmed, I have no doubt, reduced thyroid function, dental fluorosis, kidney problems. If you don't study these things, you don't necessarily find, you don't necessarily find what the results have been. But thanks for your time.
Are there any other representatives of groups who wish to speak to this measure?
My name is Joseph Erante. I'm from Northeast Delta Dental. I'm a vice president there. I'm a dentist, and I have been for 45, almost 45 years now, and I can tell you that chronic tooth decay is the most common chronic disease for adults and children in the United States, and this will end up being a catastrophe for the City of Rutland, where there's already the dentist, the dental community here is 50% of the dental community is over the age of 60 years old, and they were a few years ago, when I looked at the last data that was available to me at the time, and they're probably in their late 60s now, approaching 70 years old. And I can tell you that Northeast Delta Dental, because one of the, one of the jobs I have there is to involve myself with strategic philanthropy, and we've given $6 million to a student loan repayment fund to try to attract dentists to our states, our three states, Vermont, Maine, and New Hampshire, because we have such an issue with getting access to care. And if this, if this passes and goes through, we'll have one individual who'll make a decision as to whether he should have fluoride in the water or not, and fluoride in the water is one of the top public health strategies around tooth decay. I can tell you from practicing, it's been in the waters, in community water, since I've been practicing for 45 years now, and it doesn't seem to harm too many people. I have not seen any harm with it. The only thing I would say is that there's some of these, I had some communities in, where I practiced, where there were extremely high fluoride in the water, well water, and those teeth were as hard as rock, to be honest with you. They were, they were never going to get decayed because they, they had a little bit of fluorosis or the white spots that was mentioned earlier, but those were super hard. I'd go through burrs and burrs and burrs to crown those teeth if I needed to crown them for some reason, from some other usual, usually for another reason relative to the, not tooth decay typically. But anyway, 34 million hours of school time is lost due to emergency and unplanned dental treatments each year. That's in the United States. And I can tell you that in Canada, there was a large city, Calgary, that is a cold-weather city like here in Rutland, Vermont, and they stopped fluoridation in 2011, and they saw their cavity rate rise significantly, and it's a little bit of a belt and suspenders type of approach. The research shows that it's a little bit of, it's not just, you can't just have the topical application of fluoride because you need to have the systemic approach too, particularly in the lower socioeconomic. In fact, we've been doing modeling and age-one examination, needing the examination of children in Portland, Maine, and we've been using that to teach dental hygienist students how to do those, perform those examinations, and we actually tell the people there to drink, make sure they're drinking tap water instead of apple juice and other things that create all sorts of tooth decay because we're trying to avoid the children that end up in the OR with tremendous tooth decay disease, and early childhood care, as it's called. Anyway, we have a pediatric dentist here too, I think, that can speak to that much better than I can, but as a practicing dentist, I would hate to see us revert back to where the Dark Ages in a way, where we would have much, much, much more tooth decay than we have today. Thank you.
All right, welcome to the first of two required public hearings on a proposed charter change. Pursuant to Section 2.2 of the City of Rutland Charter and 17 DSA, Section 2645A1, the mayor has received a petition from not less than 5% of the legal voters of the City of Rutland to include the following question on the ballot for town meeting day on March 5th. Shall the voters amend the City of Rutland Charter, Subchapter 24, Department of Public Works, Section 9-24.4, Commissioner, control of water supply as follows, to add the language of this language: "Notwithstanding any other provision in this charter, no fluoride or any chemical containing fluoride shall be added to the City of Rutland water supply." So those in attendance who wish to speak to the proposed charter change, I can hear you raise your hands so we have an understanding of how many folks want to speak. All right, seven, so not bad, so folks can take their time, if you want five minutes or a little more to speak, that's fine. So what we'll do is we'll run the hearing like this. I'm going to have all the representatives of the groups proposing the amendment to speak first. Hey, Mr. Crowther, that'll be you, right?
Favor of the annual.
Proposing, is what I said.
Oh, I thought you said proposal, okay.
Propose. I'll try to enunciate. If there are any other groups who have a representative who wishes to speak for his proposal, we'll follow with them, and then each person after that who wishes to speak. Remember, only the person with the floor can speak. When I call on you, step to the podium, say your name and city of town of residence for the record, and we'll keep it orderly. So, Mr. Crowther, you want to go first?
My name is Jack Crowther, longtime resident of the City of Rutland. What's wrong with fluoridation? Many of you heard me talk about these points before, but I'll go over them rather quickly. Fluoridation is a violation of medical ethics. We're putting a drug, a medicine, in our water to treat tooth decay without the informed consent of the people that are receiving the medicine. That, to me, is a violation of medical ethics, and I would ask the public health community and the dental community, how is that not a violation of informed consent? Peer-reviewed science shows fluoride is a risk to infant brain development. Studies since 2017, high-quality studies, a number of them funded by the United States government, have shown a connection between increased fluoride levels in mothers and reduced IQ in the children. Fluoride is known to be an endocrine disruptor, disruptor of the hormonal system. This is well-established in science by, for example, the National Academies of Science. Fluoride upsets kidney function and glucose metabolism. Probably the most recognized ill effect of fluoride is causing dental fluorosis. This is a chart. Dental fluorosis is basically white spots staining, sometimes brown staining in severe cases, of the teeth. I think if any of you look at people's teeth, you will see occasionally instances of dental fluorosis, which is clearly linked to overconsumption of fluoride, overexposure to fluoride when the tooth enamel is being formed. The effectiveness of tooth decay remains inconclusive after 70 years, now, now almost 80 years. One of the most impressive demonstrations of this, and there are a number of studies that come to the same conclusion, that fluoride in the water is either of uncertain benefit or of no benefit. This is a graph of statistics compiled by the World Health Organization showing declines in tooth decay since 1970 in fluoridated countries, shown in red, and non-fluoridated countries, shown in blue, and what's evident is that decline has been very similar whether the country was fluoridated or not. Western Europe is about 97% unfluoridated, which belies the claim of the pro-fluoridationists that, and this is a citation of the Centers for Disease Control, which says that fluoridation was one of the top 10 achievements of the 20th century. If that was the case, why has not the rest of the world joined in and adopted fluoridation? Even our own CDC, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, says that the best use of fluoride is as a topical application to the surface of the teeth. Why then, when we have toothpaste, fluoride rinses, why then do we need to ingest it? Particularly when the benefits of fluoride in the water remains unproven. You know, the Public Health Service endorsed this practice in 1950, and all this time later, they're still pushing it hard. The proponents of fluoridation often say that, well, we need fluoridation for poor people because they don't get proper dental care. So this is a way of giving them some protection. Well, what I've said about the effectiveness or lack of effectiveness of fluoridation gives a lie to that statement. Low-income people are less able to buy fluoridated water. Low-income populations are also, in many cases, suffer greater instances of kidney disease and diabetes. Both of these conditions are exacerbated by ingestion of fluoride. The dentists and public health people often start out their presentations with the statement, well, fluoride is a natural mineral, and nearly all water supplies have fluoride in it. Well, that's a true statement. Fluoride is widespread in nature and fairly common in different concentrations in water supplies. What do we put in our, in Rutland's water? We don't put natural fluoride in the water. We put a chemical called fluorosilic acid, a highly corrosive chemical that must be shipped in lined tanks. The commissioner can probably verify the safety measures that are necessary in handling fluorosilic acid. It's a byproduct of the phosphate fertilizer industry. You treat phosphate rock with sulfuric acid. You get phosphate fertilizer, and as a byproduct, which goes up the chimney but is scrubbed with scrubbers, that scrubbed material is fluorosilic acid, contains various impurities, arsenic usually. When I look at the sheets that come with the Rutland delivery of fluorosilic acid, arsenic is in there. So it's not pharmaceutical grade at all. It's sometimes implied that, well, we have NSF International, which analyzes the shipments of this chemical, and that's some kind of guarantee of safety. Well, NSF does not guarantee the safety of fluorosilic acid. It tells you, it analyzes the content of batches of fluorosilic acid, and there's so much of fluorosilic acid, so much arsenic, so much of these other chemicals, but no guarantee of safety. Nobody guarantees the safety of this, of this process, which has raised a question in my mind, what about the liability to Rutland if someone is able to show that they've been injured, that they're sensitive to fluoride in the water? And there are people who are particularly sensitive, Peg Florrie testified here a couple of times about her son and grandson being, that she cannot give them a glass of tap water when they visit her because they're particularly sensitive, they've got Crohn's disease, and their doctor has said, avoid fluoridation. Why are we putting a chemical in the water if, you know, any small group of people are going to be sickened by it? Nearly all of the fluoride Rutland adds to its water ends up in Otter Creek, where I maintain it is an environmental pollutant. The fluorosilic acid that we're buying for the city is a hazardous waste product. It cannot be dumped by the fertilizer companies into a lake or river or the ocean. It's a hazardous waste. So we bring it up to Rutland, we drink it, we flush it down the toilet, down the shower, goes into Otter Creek, and, you know, it's a pollutant to the environment. How is that, how does that make any sense? It's often said that, well, that fluoride is very diluted in the water supply, you would have to drink, you know, you know, a swimming pool of fluoride, you know, to be killed by it. It's really not the issue. It's long-term exposure fluoride collects in the skeletal system, in the pineal gland. You know, most of it is extruded by the kidney, but if you have a kidney problem, then you're absorbing more, more of the fluoride, you're keeping more of it in your body and where it can do harm in various ways. I'll close and let other people talk, but one final thing I wanted to mention was, you know, this is, fluoride is in the water systems of most people in this country because it's been widely sold and widely accepted over many years. In 2016, opponents of fluoridation, nonprofit groups and a number of citizens filed a petition with the Environmental Protection Agency to end fluoridation due to the risks these chemicals pose to the brain. The research was so strong in that particular area that they made this the focus of the lawsuit, although they, you know, they could have, they could have listed other harms for which there's evidence, but they decided to focus on this, the risk to the developing brain of the fetus and infants who may be being fed formula which is made with fluoridated water. This petition was filed under the Toxic Substances Control Act, and here's the timeline of the lawsuit and its progress. It just so happens, I mean, this started in November 2016. The initial trial was in June of 2020, a seven-day trial, various delays since then. One of the delays was due to a pending report from the National Toxicology Program, which had a study that was due to come out. Well, we come down to January 31st, 2024. This is the second phase of the trial that's gone through all these, all these steps and delays, and those of us opposed to fluoridation are hoping that this will lead to a decision by the judge in our favor and that fluoridation will be basically disallowed by order of a judge to the Environmental Protection Agency. If any of you are interested in following it, it's going to be streamed on Zoom, starting 11:30 on Wednesday. You can go to the fluoridealert.org website and find the details for how you can watch it. There's, it's, I believe, a 10-day trial, so, yeah, it might be time-consuming, but we're hoping that this will bring an end to it. But in the meantime, you know, sometimes the EPA is, takes its time in writing up orders to implement a judicial finding. Rutland's been fluoridated for 40 years, way too long. People have been harmed, I have no doubt, reduced thyroid function, dental fluorosis, kidney problems. If you don't study these things, you don't necessarily find, you don't necessarily find what the results have been. But thanks for your time.
Are there any other representatives of groups who wish to speak to this measure? Just one, step up in the room. Thank you.
My name is Joseph Erante. I'm from Northeast Delta Dental. I'm a vice president there. I'm a dentist, and I have been for 45, almost 45 years now, and I can tell you that chronic tooth decay is the most common chronic disease for adults and children in the United States, and this will end up being a catastrophe for the City of Rutland, where there's already the dentist, the dental community here is 50% of the dental community is over the age of 60 years old, and they were a few years ago, when I looked at the last data that was available to me at the time, and they're probably in their late 60s now, approaching 70 years old. And I can tell you that Northeast Delta Dental, because one of the, one of the jobs I have there is to involve myself with strategic philanthropy, and we've given $6 million to a student loan repayment fund to try to attract dentists to our states, our three states, Vermont, Maine, and New Hampshire, because we have such an issue with getting access to care, and if this, if this passes and goes through, we'll have one individual who'll make a decision as to whether he should have fluoride in the water or not, and fluoride in the water is one of the top public health strategies around tooth decay. I can tell you from practicing, it's been in the waters, in community water, since I've been practicing for 45 years now, and it doesn't seem to harm too many people. I have not seen any harm with it. The only thing I would say is that there's some of these, I had some communities in, where I practiced, where there were extremely high fluoride in the water, well water, and those teeth were as hard as rock, to be honest with you. They were, they were never going to get decayed because they, they had a little bit of fluorosis or the white spots that was mentioned earlier, but those were super hard. I'd go through burrs and burrs and burrs to crown those teeth if I needed to crown them for some reason, from some other usual, usually for another reason relative to the, not tooth decay typically. But anyway, 34 million hours of school time is lost due to emergency and unplanned dental treatments each year. That's in the United States. And I can tell you that in Canada, there was a large city, Calgary, that is a cold-weather city like here in Rutland, Vermont, and they stopped fluoridation in 2011, and they saw their cavity rate rise significantly, and it's a little bit of a Belton Suspenders type of approach. The research shows that it's a little bit of, it's not just, you can't just have the topical application of fluoride because you need to have the systemic approach too, particularly in the lower socioeconomic. In fact, we've been doing modeling and age-one examination, needing the examination of children in Portland, Maine, and we've been using that to teach dental hygienist students how to do those, perform those examinations, and we actually tell the people there to drink, make sure they're drinking tap water instead of apple juice and other things that create all sorts of tooth decay because we're trying to avoid the children that end up in the OR with tremendous tooth decay disease, and early childhood care, as it's called. Anyway, we have a pediatric dentist here too, I think, that can speak to that much better than I can, but as a practicing dentist, I would hate to see us revert back to where the Dark Ages in a way, where we would have much, much, much more tooth decay than we have today. Thank you.
All right, welcome to the first of two required public hearings on a proposed charter change. Pursuant to Section 2.2 of the City of Rutland Charter and 17 DSA, Section 2645A1, the mayor has received a petition from not less than 5% of the legal voters of the City of Rutland to include the following question on the ballot for town meeting day on March 5th. Shall the voters amend the City of Rutland Charter, Subchapter 24, Department of Public Works, Section 9-24.4, Commissioner, control of water supply as follows, to add the language of this language: "Notwithstanding any other provision in this charter, no fluoride or any chemical containing fluoride shall be added to the City of Rutland water supply." So those in attendance who wish to speak to the proposed charter change, I can hear you raise your hands so we have an understanding of how many folks want to speak. All right, seven, so not bad, so folks can take their time, if you want, five minutes or a little more to speak, that's fine. So what we'll do is we'll run the hearing like this. I'm going to have all the representatives of the groups proposing the amendment to speak first. Hey, Mr. Crowther, that'll be you, right?
Favor of the annual.
Proposing, is what I said.
Oh, I thought you said proposal, okay.
Propose. I'll try to enunciate. If there are any other groups who have a representative who wishes to speak for his proposal, we'll follow with them, and then each person after that who wishes to speak. Remember, only the person with the floor can speak. When I call on you, step to the podium, say your name and city of town of residence for the record, and we'll keep it orderly. So, Mr. Crowther, you want to go first?
My name is Jack Crowther, longtime resident of the City of Rutland. What's wrong with fluoridation? Many of you heard me talk about these points before, but I'll go over them rather quickly. Fluoridation is a violation of medical ethics. We're putting a drug, a medicine, in our water to treat tooth decay without the informed consent of the people that are receiving the medicine. That, to me, is a violation of medical ethics, and I would ask the public health community and the dental community, how is that not a violation of informed consent? It's also a strategy to promote population health in Vermont State Health Improvement Plan and State Health Improvement Plan, and State Oral Health Plan, rather. I want to address concerns about safety, effectiveness, and ethics of community water fluoridation. First, let's talk about safety. This is from the CDC's website. "The safety and effectiveness of fluoride levels used in community water fluoridation," and that's the key. When we're talking about community water fluoridation, we're talking about a carefully-controlled The US Department of Health and Human Services led the development of Healthy People 2030, which is a list of health goals for our nation. Increasing the percentage of people who benefit from community water fluoridation is a Healthy People and a Healthy Vermont or 2030 goal. It's also a strategy to promote population health in Vermont's State Health Improvement Plan and State Health Improvement Plan, and State Oral Health Plan, rather. I want to address concerns about safety, effectiveness, and ethics of community water fluoridation. First, let's talk about safety. This is from the CDC's website. The safety and effectiveness of fluoride levels used in community water fluoridation, and that's the key. When we're talking about community water fluoridation, we're talking about a carefully controlled level of point seven parts per million. The safety and effectiveness of fluoride at levels used in community water fluoridation have been thoroughly reviewed by multinational scientific public health organizations using evidence-based reviews and expert panels. The safety and effectiveness of community water fluoridation continues to be supported by scientific evidence produced by independent scientists and summarized by a panel of experts. As I mentioned, there's a lot of information about fluoride and fluoridation available. For example, a report by the National Toxicology Program is often used to cast doubt on the safety of community water fluoridation. However, much of the evidence presented in the report comes from studies that involve relatively high fluoride concentrations. Also, since its original draft, the National Toxicology Program has removed its hazard classification of fluoride. This indicates to me that the NTP realized that its initial draft overstated concerns. Lastly, the NTP report failed to complete the peer review process. In fact, the National Academies of Science wrote this about the NTP report. The report falls short of providing clear and convincing documentation of the evidence to support its conclusions. The monograph needs to emphasize that much of the evidence presented comes from studies that involve relatively high fluoride concentrations. And to make it clear that the report cannot be used to draw conclusions about low fluoride exposure, including those in fluoridated drinking water systems. Also, thirty-one European experts in toxicology and, and food safety examined this same issue. These experts reviewed numerous studies and wrote the following in twenty twenty. The available epidemiological evidence does not provide sufficient arguments to raise concerns with regard to fluoridated water and to justify the conclusion that fluoride is a human developmental neurotoxicant. So now I want to talk about the safety of the fluoride additive used in Rutland. Approximately seventy, seventy-three percent of the United States population served by community water fluoridate, served by community water benefits from fluoridated water. The type of fluoride additive used in Rutland is fluorosilic acid. It's the most commonly used form of fluoride across the country. It comes from a rock that contains phosphate and calcium. And this rock is also used to make fertilizer to help plants grow. This is an example of using one thing to make multiple products. Rules and standards help assure the safety and quality of fluoride additives. All additives used by water treatment plants, including fluoride additives, must meet strict quality standards and assure the public safety. Regarding the effectiveness of fluoridation, which provides a twenty-five percent reduction in tooth decay, consider the evidence. A twenty eighteen study analyzed dental health data for nearly twenty thousand US children. Bear in mind that cavities are often described as needing a one surface or a two surface filling. This study revealed that a classroom of twenty children who have access to fluoridated water received these benefits. Twenty-six fewer decayed surfaces of their primary teeth, six fewer decayed surfaces of their permanent teeth. There are about seventy-two million children in America. This indicates that tens of millions of teeth have been protected from cavities by fluoridation. And this is a quote from that study. These findings confirm a substantial caries preventive benefit of community water fluoridation for US children and that the benefit is most pronounced in primary teeth. As I said earlier, this is an incredibly important issue. We all want to know that the water we're drinking is safe and healthy. Let me close with some compelling evidence about the benefits of community water fluoridation. In Windsor, Ontario, the city council voted to stop fluoridation. Several years later, a local health official released data showing a fifty-one percent jump in severity of tooth decay. This shocked the city council, which voted eight to three to start fluoridating again in twenty eighteen. Dr. Arante already mentioned Calgary, which stopped fluoridating in twenty eleven and started again in twenty twenty-one. A twenty twenty-two study of two Alaskan cities compared changes in the treatment costs for cavities experienced by low income children. In the city that stopped fluoridation, the cost of cavity procedures increased by forty-seven percent. In the city that remained fluoridated, these costs barely changed. In closing, the National Institutes of Health defines fluoride as a mineral, not a medicine. Medicine is usually used to treat a condition, not to prevent it. Community water fluoridation is about prevention of dental disease, which is a significant public health problem. Public health has a series of promoting strategies to prevent disease in populations. Other examples include immunizations, seat belt and helmet laws, and fortifying foods and beverages with vitamins and minerals. Community water fluoridation is a public health practice that benefits everyone in a community, regardless of age, race, income level, or disability status. And that is what public health is all about. Thanks for allowing me to provide information about community water fluoridation on behalf of the Health Department.
Hi, everybody. I'm Steve Rays. I am a pediatric dentist. My background is I got started in Alaska, actually. This is my thirty-fourth year of practice. I went up there, it's kind of the northern exposure story, only the dental version of it. I went up on loan repayment and started my practice up there, straight out of dental school. I did general dentistry for about eight and a half years. Went back to Michigan, trained for pediatric dentistry, and I've been working with kids ever since. What drove me there is just the tremendous need of the pediatric population in Alaska. And so I decided to specialize so that I could go back and help those kids. I just, you know, I could, I could put you to sleep with studies and I could talk about all kinds of studies and sample sizes and results and all kinds of things. But what does this mean to Rutland, really? Probably I could, I'd rather read you a bedtime story. One thing I haven't heard tonight is, is the whole concept of the history of fluoride, how in the world did we even come upon it? And some of you may have heard it, some of you may not have. But what they discovered was a population in Colorado in which people had interesting appearance of teeth. And so epidemiologists from the US government went out to study and figure out what was causing these effects on the teeth. And incidentally, they found that some of these individuals with these lesions on the teeth, which was shown here tonight, were really resistant to decay. And so they started to explore the question of why are these people that have these lesions resistant to decay? And they fell upon fluoride. That was the common denominator that was actually in the water source in, in that area. And so they went about studying what the difference was between those that had no spots, those that had very light spots that almost looked like you had your teeth bleached, and those that had really brown, mottled, poorly shaped teeth. And it was a dose-dependent sort of exposure to fluoride from their water source. Some of the water sources naturally had an awfully high level. What they discovered through a lot of epidemiological research was that point seven parts per million was the actual ideal amount, where you would actually have that resistance to decay, but you wouldn't get the lesions and the spots on the teeth. So that's how it all came about. Nineteen forty-five, Grand Rapids, Michigan was the first place to add it to the water at the optimal level. And it's been a journey ever since. There have been studies mentioned tonight, but I'll just summarize that. There's been seven thousand, or there are currently seven thousand research papers that are available on the National Library of Medicine on fluoride alone. I want to say a couple of things. If, if there were some major neurological toxicity and other things that have been blamed on fluoride, IQ levels, cancer, in thirty-four years, I've heard it all. I think we would have discovered it in seven thousand studies. Stated another way, I went into these places, actually some of them that Robin just mentioned in Alaska, were some of the cities that I'm familiar with, where fluoride essentially was taken out of the village water supply due to concerns. And I can tell you, those weren't the most popular villages for us to fly into with portable gear and aircraft because we knew we had our work cut out for us for the week. The amount of decay was higher and the severity of decay was higher. So you're going to be dealing with extractions, root canals, much more complicated work in those villages. And the kids were the ones who paid the price. That's what drove me into pediatric dentistry. I'm the guy that these kids come to where I have to bring them to the operating room. And you'll have a child that has twenty teeth. Some of them eighteen to twenty, of the twenty have to have some type of restorative work done in a very expensive fashion in an operating room. By the time they get in and out of there, you're talking about thousands upon thousands of dollars. So after the loss of Dr. Breen here in Rutland, I was really sad to see him retire. He was amazing for the community. We're doing the, the best we can to help with Rutland kids. But I can tell you, there's a lot of kids from Rutland that come over to see us and we do all that we can. We're challenged with workforce. We're challenged with access to care. There's only so much time they're going to give us to do this in the operating room. And the backlog is, is long. Take fluoride out and all that gets worse. And I don't know how we're going to keep up with it. That's kids. Adults also have a hard time accessing dental care these days. It's expensive and there's not a lot of dentists available that have that access, you know, that have the ability to see new patients. So those are just some things I hope that the community considers when you're voting on this topic. I commend Rutland for opening this up democratically and allowing the citizens to decide essentially where this goes. But I hope all these things are taken in consideration. You know, and one thing I want you to think about is the inverse. If we were causing all this harm, once you take the fluoride out, are we seeing a decrease? Are we seeing an increase in IQs? Are we seeing a decrease in cancer? Are we, all these things that we're proposing is coming from fluoride. I can tell you, you can reverse it out and you don't see that. Things don't just all of a sudden start going away because you take fluoride out of the water. But I can tell you that you will see the decay rate go up and you'll see the severity of the amount of needs go up, without question. So anyway, in, in my final experience, I can tell you that we add things to food supplies all the time. It's not just fluoride in the water. We add chlorine to the water for bacterial risks. We add calcium to orange juice for supplementation. We add vitamin D to milk in this great state of Vermont to supplement that. We add iodine to table salt to stop goiters. We add all kinds of things to food in the interest of public health. Or any of those risks, sure they are. Everything is dose-dependent and, and everything is a potential risk, even water. If you drink enough water, as we've heard of marathoners actually having issues from hyponatremia from drinking too much water, everything in the wrong dosage can cause issues. My final thing I want to say, because I know it's late and you all probably have heard enough, but I just want to appeal to your logic. Who in the world would benefit most from fluoride coming out of the water than dentists? So why would I drive an hour and a half to come and chat with you folks tonight? It's to appeal for those that are going to suffer as a result of it coming out of the water. And that's the kids, that's the adults, and those, these are the people who don't have the finances and other means to be able to cover the costs as a result of doing this. So I appreciate your time. Thank you for hearing me out and I wish you good luck in the election.
Hello. My name is Lopee LaRoe. I'm a local artist. I live and I own a home in Rutland City. I'm a resident. I find it curious that the people who are pro fluoridation of our water seem to be all from out of town. I would love to be proven wrong about that, but that's what, I noticed that the three people that just spoke didn't say where they're a resident from. And yeah, so that's something I wanted to bring up. I'm concerned about water and my three main concerns are financial, ethical, and medical. So first of all, this is a quote from the Food and Drug Administration from December twenty-first, two thousand. It says, quote, fluoride, when used in the diagnosis, cure, mitigation, treatment, or prevention of disease in man or animal, is a drug that is subject to Food and Drug Administration regulation. So it may be naturally occurring, but when it is in the form that it's being added to our water, it is considered a drug by the Food and Drug Administration. Second of all, I wonder how it is that any, anyone, all of us have doctors, right? We have our primary care doctors. Would our doctor ever prescribe a medicine to us by just saying, here, drink as much water as you can or want to? It's not, it's not regu, how do they measure the dosage in the water? So some people are going to drink more, some people are going to drink less. And it also, it costs money for people who don't want it in their water to remove it from the water. And I think it's unfair to put the onus on the people who don't want it in their water, the financial onus, on the people that don't want it in our water. Instead of, it would be much cheaper just to provide residents with a tablet that they can add to their, to their water supply. That way they could actually measure the dosage more accurately. And it would be consent-based, which at this point, it's not consent-based. It's just sort of foisted upon the people, no matter if it is a majority or a minority. They just have to either drink spring water, which is what I do. I did install a whole house water filtration system on my house and it cost a considerable amount, but it doesn't even remove fluoride from the water. It's, you need a reverse osmosis system to remove fluoride, which is really expensive. I can't afford that. I think that's unfair. And I think it's also a matter of what Rutland City can afford. I think it would be much cheaper for Rutland City to purchase fluoride in the form of tablets to provide to residents who would like to have that in their water, be they low income or high income or whatnot. That's irrelevant. I mean, I was raised low income and we just brushed our teeth. I mean, I was taught to brush my teeth three times a day. Like, it didn't matter that we didn't have a lot of money. It was just a matter of just good practice, good hygiene. So the other concerns that I have, let's see, I'm just going to look at my notes here really quick. Why is it that the city commissioner is able to practice medicine without a medical license on all of us? I don't, I don't understand how that is even legal because he's prescribing, essentially prescribing a medication, putting it directly into our water without a medical license. Michael, are you paying attention? Thank you. And as far as like the dark ages or whatnot, a hundred and fifteen towns and cities in Vermont have banned fluoride, fluoridation of their water systems. Only forty-one still put fluoride in the water, Rutland among them. I think that it's unfair, it's not ethical, it's medically not a good practice because you can't measure it. And financially, it's unaffordable for people who don't want it in our water. And I think the whole debate between, you know, it's been, what is this debate? Has been going on for like probably eighty years, like, oh, this study shows it's good, this study shows it's bad, you know? Those are all irrelevant when you come down to the fact of consent. Who is consenting to have this in their water and who is not consenting? And why is it that some people get to decide what's put in the water when it's harder to remove it than it is to add it in? So like, if you just don't add it in, then people can all get their way. The people who want it in the water can add it to their water. The people that don't want it in their water will be happy to not have it in their water. Like personally, like I said, I don't drink tap water, but I do bathe in it. And I think that our skin, being the largest organ of our body, it's absorbed into my system. And I'm not happy about that, but I, like I said, I can't really afford a whole house reverse osmosis system, which is financially just unfeasible for me. So I believe I have covered, yeah, everything that I wanted to say. And I just urge you guys to consider what I have presented here today. Thank you.
Good evening. Kathleen Krawetsky from Roberts Avenue. I've been coming up here for a long time and as you can see, we're aging out. And so this is our last best hope for our children here in Rutland. I'm so furious with the Board of Health coming in the last time, two weeks before the election, and passing misinformation, not only through editorials in the newspaper, but also on the radio. And some of that misinformation that was repeat, well, not repeated because no, they're, they're admitting that it is from the fertilizer industry, this hazardous waste product that Rutland has to use and the rest of the country uses with additional has to use and the rest of the country uses with additional contaminants in it like arsenic. So we're putting that in our water and calling it fluoride. And we know now that it's a neurotoxin. We've known that for a long time, but we had to sue the EPA to get them to come out with their information. And the information that's been coming out publicly on this trial that's coming this week is bad. It's really bad because what it showed is we can't trust the CDC anymore and we can't trust the EPA and we can't trust the Department of Public Health because you know what? They don't even give out toothbrushes. They don't, they absolutely support fluoride in the water, but they don't have a toothbrush to give any of our kids because I went looking for it and I would have to buy myself. So I say in Rutland, to the people that are listening to this, there's a better way and we don't have to listen to this propaganda because that's what it was. All those studies that you talk about, the National Toxicology Program is the bottom line on what that is. And it's a hazardous waste and we shouldn't be drinking it and we shouldn't even be putting it in our water because the CDC says, CDC says it doesn't work in the water. It works by direct application to the teeth. Are you all aware of that? The CDC says it doesn't work in the water. You can't be drinking it. When you drink it, it's settling in the bones and causing bone fluorosis so that people fall down and break their hips and knock their shoulders out. So that's making old women more fragile because they're drinking it. There's a lot of people that can't drink it. Kidney dialysis, you can't drink it. And we're still doing it and we're using a hazardous waste. So it was really hard to come and bring this to a vote again. But let me tell you about the people that we were out there. We collected a lot of signatures from people that used to be voters in Rutland, that they lost their houses, that they're living in wherever because they were pushed out by their landlords because they could charge more. So, and those people that are on the ground, coming to talk to us and sign our petitions, they thought they were Rutland voters, is what it comes down to and they're not. So what I'm saying here is we have an opportunity to do something different. And what that is, is they've been talking about a Rutland regional plan for the future. What can we do for Rutland for the future? And what I propose is that we use clean water like we're using clean food to promote Rutland. We could go into food production, frozen food production of the stuff that we have here. We don't need anybody to come out of state and buy our houses for very good amount of money because all our real estate's doing really well now that we live here, but we don't have to find. So that's, the other issue is they said back then that it didn't cross the placenta. Fluoride crossed the placenta. How dare the Department of Public Health come and tell us that it doesn't? And you can look up Harry Chen's editorial that he put in the paper because there was lots of lies there too. We call them misinformation. But what it is, it's Delta Dental putting out all the information on what they have to say to show that we have to still keep buying that hazardous waste to put it in our, in our water. And I say we don't need it. Now, what we do need is toothbrushes and dental care for the kids. So what I suggest is that we consider really focusing on improving the health of our community, especially the children. What's the dental carries rate in third grade in Rutland? It's over 30% in Vermont. You can't read their, you can't read their information anymore because it's not evident. So you've got, I think it's like 33% or more dental carries in third graders in all of Vermont. If it's 33% in all of Vermont, what is it in Rutland? You told us it was, it's bad. It's bad because the kids aren't brushing their teeth, is what it comes down to. And because fluoride is going to save us. Now, the other thing is, what's our reading levels for fourth grade reading levels, right? You would think that they would be okay, but I had information that I supplied to the school board in 2016 saying, our reading levels are not good. Our children are not learning. Now, we've had COVID and everything else, but I am saying we have a sick community. We have a chronic, a diseased illness from the, where am I getting it from? From the Rutland Regional Medical Center does that report every two years. You all, well, I don't know if you all know, but you know, our kids are not doing well here in the city. And what do they have, what do they look forward to? What do they have to look forward to really? And so what I propose is that we really commit to, let's, improving the health of our community. And the first thing to do is to get the fluoride out of the water and bring in a research organization that's going to show, gee, my chronic pain, my arthritic pain's not feeling so bad as it did when I was drinking it full bore. So there's a lot, there's a lot of things like that that you can do. I'm just so disappointed in, you know, Rutland, we have the ability to make changes. We do have the ability to make changes, but sticking to old propaganda, and that's what it is, when you know, when you really look at what's going on and when you have the EPA under fire because not only were they lying, they put up, they put up evidence that was false. And I know a lot of those, those testing done in Canada, those also proved false too. So you can talk all about what you're saying and what you believe in it, but I am saying we need to start a program for dental health in Rutland City and go from there. It will not cost $11,000 to pass out toothbrushes. And I really want to be able to look at, okay, so where are we in a year? Well, let's talk about, you promised us you would not buy fluorosalicylic acid until we had a vote on it because we're running out and we know you can't get rid of it. It's hazardous waste, so we have to use it up. So please stick by that and let's see how this vote goes. But we're going to have to know the information about what's going on and it just happens this week that they're going to trial. And if you follow that, and it's easy to follow, there's lots of material on there on what is true and what isn't true, we could do wonderful things for Rutland because then we can go into food production. There's no reason why we're not putting out frozen food production and giving people opportunity for that. And the Vermont Farmers Food Center is ready to go, is what it comes down to. They are ready to go for food production. You just have to get the city behind, behind them and offering them clean water so that when we are cooking in the city, we don't have that as an issue. So, thank you.
My name's Wayne Krawitzky. I also live here in Rutland. When it comes to, all right, first, I'm not going to argue that Rutland doesn't have a dentist problem. I mean, we're really short on dentists. I'm going on to my third. I'm still in the same practice, but they can't, you know, there's just a shortage of dentists. I'm not going to argue with that. I'm not going to argue that fluoride treatments from the dentist aren't helpful. I don't know enough about it. I'll accept, you know, it's okay. What I do know, okay, is that first, the, when you're getting that fluoride treatment, they tell you spit it out, not to swallow it. When you read your toothpaste box and tube, they tell you not to swallow the fluoride toothpaste. What's that all about? They don't want you taking the fluoride. There's no way in heck that the people that are putting that fluoride in the water know how many gallons of water I'm going to drink in a day. It makes no sense. So there's no control over the dosage, though they lead you to think that there is. The last thing that I want to say is that there was a time when opium, mercury, paragoric were all prescribed by doctors and they were a wonderful thing to save any number of diseases. And we all know that that's no longer the case. They found that there was more problems with them than they really solved anything. I think we're on the verge of doing that with fluoride. And let's not hold on to something that really has seen its day and we found that there's more, there's going to, there's more problems with it than advantages that come out of it. And well, and one last, you know, they talk about, I wanted to bring up, the good person over there brought up the thing about telling kids to drink water instead of apple juice and what's good for their teeth. Well, apple juice is full of sugar, all right? And you, if you look at what the lower income people are doing, they're, you watch, look at what they're buying, it's all sugar and processed foods that has more sugar in it. Well, yeah, if you're going to have all that sugar and you can't afford to go to a dentist, you're going to have problems with cavities and such. Fluoride's not going to help that. That's about it. Thank you.
Good evening. So I was contacted by Representative Clifford. He couldn't make it tonight and he asked me if he would, if I would read this letter that he sent to us for this hearing. It says, Dear Mayor Dungus, it has come to my attention that a petition has been circulated regarding the use of fluoride in the city water supply. I understand the specific language in the petition requests that the Public Works Commissioner be relinquished of the right to have any jurisdiction regarding the use of fluoride in the city water system. As a former Public Works Commissioner, I must object to this specific language. While I understand the intent of the petition, I'm concerned about the precedent this may set in conjunction with the powers of the Commissioner as established by the Charter. If this request is placed on the ballot and approved by the voters, future petitions will likely arise simply because the special interest groups disagree with the opinion of the Commissioner and they may attempt to try to remove powers via votes resulting in Charter changes. I suggest the ballot simply state, shall the City of Rutland continue to use chemical fluoride in the city water system? This keeps the intent clear. Thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Good evening. I was, I, excuse me, I am Ada Pizzetti and I live in the City of Rutland and have for 60 years. I am a former biology teacher because I have always been interested in the body, how we keep it at its optimum health. And so therefore, excuse me, I'm very interested in this fluoride problem. I am focused, whether you are for fluoride or against fluoride, I think for me, the most important issue is, is it ethical to put something in the community drinking water? Is it ethical? Because that particular additive, fluoride, is not making the water any safer. Yes, we need chlorine to keep the bacteria out, but as a person who tries to take very little medicine and, you know, keep my body chemical free, I feel, I feel that it is a travesty that I cannot drink the city water simply because it has a chemical in it that is not keeping the water safe, but it is adding to some people's problems. Now, even if 0.8% of Rutland residents are affected by this water, or 10 people, then unfortunately, we are medicating everyone, everyone, and these poor people cannot drink the water. So just, let's just think about, is it ethical to put a chemical in the water that isn't making it any safer when, again, as Christine said, we can put that money towards toothbrushes, toothpaste, or give the tablets to the children in school? Let's think of creative alternatives so that people who want fluoride can get fluoride. Look at, if you, if you go and buy toothpaste like I did the other day, there's this much selection for anti-fluoride toothpaste. And the rest of the aisle, all the way down, was, you know, toothpaste with fluoride. So let people with fluoride, want fluoride, get it. But let, please, let's think about the morality and ethical business of putting a chemical in the water. Thank you.
I feel the need for some fact checking on some of the, fact checking and theme checking on some of the speakers in favor. I find that as they always do, they've used fear tactics to predict what will happen when we stop fluoridation. Well, tooth decay is going to go through the roof, but they don't have proof that that's going to happen. That's just a fear tactic to make us afraid of making a change here. In 2016 and again tonight, they've cited the Calgary situation where they were, they stopped fluoridation and then they voted to restart it. Incidentally, they have not restarted fluoridation. That's, I believe that's false to this day. They voted to restart it, they haven't done so. Sometimes the cost of these installations is prohibitive and it doesn't get done. So there was a study done by a pro-fluoride dentist in Calgary that said, well, the tooth decay rate went up. Our folks, Fluoride Action Network, took a close look at that study. Turns out that the tooth decay rate had started to increase before they stopped fluoridation. The study was pretty conclusively shown to be biased and invalid. So Juneau, Alaska, another situation where stopping fluoride was said to have increased tooth decay. Another instance where the study was clearly flawed. It was based on, it was based on claims through dental or the health insurance system. So it was not, it was not a rigorous look at tooth decay, but rather interpretation of some health insurance data. The dentist here, I didn't hear your name, but 7,000 studies with a wave of the hand, they all show the effectiveness of fluoridation. Well, there's some studies you're not looking at, particularly some recent ones, 2017, 18, 19, 23, for example, just one example. And these are some high-quality studies funded by, for example, the National Institutes of Health. 2017 study found that every milligram per liter increase in fluoride in pregnant women's urine was linked to a reduction of their children's IQ by an average of five to six points. I'm not going to read details of these studies. I have a sheet if anyone's interested. There is good recent research showing a clear connection between ingestion of fluoride and damage to the brain. It was stated that, well, the history of fluoride, yes, this Colorado brown stain triggered some scientific inquiry into what was causing it. And yes, indeed, it was fluoride, but it was not the US government, contrary to what he said that came out and determined it. It was actually an aluminum company scientist who had the expertise to It was actually an aluminum company scientist who had the expertise to determine that indeed fluoride was the cause. Now, yes, these yellow-stained teeth are hard, fluoride-affected teeth are hard, but scientists have also found that they're structurally not as strong. So the hardness of the teeth is offset by the weakness of the structure of the teeth. If you look at the history of fluoride, very interesting, you look at, well, back up a little. We know that our government is often affected by special interests, and it's very clear that this was the case in the establishment of fluoridation. You look at the early supporters of fluoridation, people contributing to the public relations sale, you know, selling of fluoridation. You've got the aluminum industry, the steel industry, the nuclear weapons industry, the sugar industry. All of these industries has special interests. The first ones I listed were all big users of fluoride. They were all subject to great liability stress from the discharges of fluoride, harm to the workers, harm to neighboring farms. Fluoride was a way of dressing up this dangerous chemical to make it acceptable to people. So that's an important note on the history of fluoridation. Let's see, I think I had another point that I was going to make. This, the dental community, the public health community, has gone to great lengths to discount the findings of the National Toxicology Program, which spent something like six years studying the toxicity of fluoride and came up with a report showing it was clearly, clearly a neurotoxicant. Then great push, bureaucratic pushback, which has actually found a place in the trial, this trial that's resuming on Wednesday. October 2022, the plaintiffs introduced evidence showing that political pressures have prevented NTP from releasing its long-awaited report. The court granted plaintiff's motion to lift the stay and permit additional discovery into the NTP review so that the court now has the final version of the NTP study, which has been suppressed by political forces in the federal bureaucracy because this is such a sensitive issue for industry. And the proponents of fluoridation wave their hands and say, well, it was lacking and didn't have peer review. This has been through multiple peer reviews. And as far as the NTP program is concerned, the report is done and it has conclusions pointing to neurotoxicity of fluoride. And the higher-ups in the Health and Human Services Department don't want it to get out because it's too upsetting. You know, we talk about, okay, the Public Works Department has won awards for their professional water treatment. No quarrel with that. That's not really the point. They do do a good, safe job of putting this chemical in our water, but I honestly believe that the decision to fluoridate never really came from the Public Works Department. I think basically that the Board of Alderman kind of foisted off that responsibility. If you look at the history of fluoridation in Rutland, it's been voted on, I think, seven times. And I believe it's four times in favor and three times against, and it's evident from the history in Rutland that basically it's a political issue, not an engineering or medical issue. And so, thank you again for listening.
Pardon me, guys, just one more quick thing that I forgot to say, and a question for you guys about, I understand the process here is a public hearing, and I assume that you give priority to Rutland residents of their opinions on the matter because, as I witnessed this meeting, it does appear that there are several people, and the majority of them are, all of them, were from out of town who were proponents of maintaining the fluoridation of our water supply. And I actually just wanted to speak on that, that I don't feel that it's quite fair that people from outside of Rutland City get to come in and just swoop in and tell us what to do with our water. Like, I just don't understand how that is even, you know, when you adjourned this meeting, you asked everybody to state where they reside, and the people from out of town neglected to say where they reside. They just came forth with their professional accolades and did not state where do they live. And the people here who live in this fine city are very much opposed to putting a chemical additive in our water. And I think we've stated that very clearly. And one last thing that I would say in the interest of levity is that perhaps we should add lithium into the water because it would make everybody so happy. And it's a naturally occurring, you know, chemical, so why not add lithium, too, if we're going to add, start adding all kinds of drugs to our water supply? I say that in jest. I don't really want them to do that. I just feel it's kind of outrageous, you know, and it is the majority of Rutland cities and towns that have banned fluoridation. So I just urge you guys, let's join the progressive move towards clean water for our citizens here. Let's join the majority of Rutland City, of Vermont cities and towns that have banned this and allow people to add fluoride to their water if they do so desire.
Hi, I'm Evo Skorik, and I'm a resident of Rutland. And I just want to read a question of a friend who couldn't come here, Lawrence Dugan. He's asking one of the three experts that were here. The city of Rutland began fluoridating its water supply in 1983. Is there epidemiologic data, as opposed to anecdotal data and political whim, supporting the premise that dental health in the city of Rutland and Rutland Town has improved since fluoridation began? So I hope one of you three can answer to that. And I was listening to everything, and I didn't made up my mind, you know? I grew up in a communist country which introduced fluoridation without democratic process. And we were all fluoridated, so I grew up fluoridated. I'm not incredibly stupid, so maybe I didn't get enough fluoride. And I had bad teeth with fluoride, so maybe it doesn't work as well as it should be. What I heard here from the three experts is essentially a disappointing and little bit denigrating and offensive lecture that we, as a low-income community, need to be fluoridated because, you know, low-income people, drug addicts, derelicts, you know, they wouldn't brush their teeth, they wouldn't wash their children, and their children are going to have high decay and a lot of problems in their life. We also heard from a person from Vermont's Department of Health. I didn't get your names, you know? So the community vote of fluoridation may be the only free health benefit that Rutland residents receive. Yeah, and I think that's quite right. Dr. Breen is gone. Why is nobody here? Why you guys didn't bring anybody here? You know, that's the question that Rutland residents are asking. Yeah, I mean, you have an opportunity to answer. So, yeah, let me see some answers from you.
Just to close a couple of things, I'm Steve Reyes, a pediatric dentist. I came over from Norwich, just to make sure everybody has identified who I am. As far as trying to identify someone for Rutland, we are working very hard to try to find an individual that will come in and take Dr. Breen's place. The efforts are great to try to identify an individual who will come, but I can tell you that you've all experienced this in life in the last few years. We cannot identify labor and providers that will come to Rutland simply because there's such a gross shortage of providers currently. So I can tell you that I was, I'm past president of Vermont State Dental Society. I took that position to try to help with oral health in the state of Vermont, just as I did in Alaska. And we are working hard to try to identify an individual. So as soon as we can, we will try to fill that position for you, most definitely.